Good afternoon. This is the regular meeting of the Alameda County Local Agency Formation Commission for Thursday, September the 11th, 2025. First order of business is to call meeting to order and do a pledge of allegiance. Would you join, stand and join me with the pledge?
We take this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is a roll call, so will staff call the roll?
Chair Johnson.
There.
Commissioner Bosch, absent. Commissioner Furia.
Present.
Commissioner Hubbard.
He will be here in fifteen minutes.
Yeah, he said fifteen minutes, I think.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshawn.
Here.
Commissioner Miley. Commissioners Splendorio.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Who?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Who will be voting for Commissioner Bosch is absent. Alternate Commissioner Tam, absent. Alternate Commissioner Rosen?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Warner?
Here.
Let the record reflect, roll call has been taken and we have a quorum.
Yeah, the next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment cards?
I do not see any, Chair.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chair Johnson. Staff would just like to make a request. If we could arrange agenda item number six to come after the consent item. Just due to a time constraint with one of our consultants who's presenting.
Okay. So, moving on from public comment, we'll go to the consent calendar. The, the next item is the consent calendar. And would any commissioners like to pull an item out to discuss before motion?
Hold on, Ralph, I had a question. Um, I had a question about, I don't remember which one it was, but it had to do with, um, I believe it was the city of Oakland. I'm trying to remember which one. There was a city that simply wouldn't respond to us.
Oh, so.
What is that one?
That's for the health services and ambulance services municipal service review, and that's Washington Town Health, Healthcare District. They're now in communication with the consultant and they have a site visit meeting at the end of the month.
But that's one of these, right?
Yes.
On the consent, okay, I, I wanted to talk about it. Can we just pull it, just, I am glad they're communicating with us, but I maybe want to send a stronger message?
Most certainly.
Okay.
It's four D.
Yeah.
It's four D.
Four D, okay. That's okay with the Chair?
Go ahead then.
Okay, so you want to bring that up, open that?
Let's do it now, yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't, you gave a short presentation, but the way I read it was that we, we have to renew the contract because Washington Healthcare District simply was unresponsive in our efforts to do our municipal service recruit, which were by statute required to do. And, uh, and all I want to say is shame on you, but, um, is there any way we can use stronger efforts to get them to understand that it's important that we do this and that they cooperate with us?
Yes, so the consultant was in communication with us. Let us know that they were going to send out another email and then they would, if that didn't work, contact us and have us send a letter, you know, with legal counsel, telling them that we are required by statute to conduct these. But fortunately it didn't come to that and they are now in communication with the consultant to work and provide data and also provide a site tour for completion of that section of the MSR.
Okay, then can I ask you that if in two months, there doesn't seem to be much, I mean, yes, it's nice to be in communication, but if there is not any progress, could you report that to us?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because maybe we could ask them to come visit us one day.
Absolutely, thank you.
Just, this is a comment, Washington Township is a member of the Special Districts Association, so we could always, I guess, contact our representative from Washington Township and kind of get them to get them all rolling as well, so. So.
Yeah, that's acceptable, that, that, yeah, that works.
Uh, so I entertain a motion in a second for the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
So do you have a motion and a second? Is there any more discussion or public comment? Uh, seeing none, this looks like it's a roll call vote.
Chair Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bosch, absent. Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Marshawn.
Uh, aye, except I'll abstain on the minutes since I was not here.
Thank you. Commissioner Miley.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Commissioner Who?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
I have a question. Just point of clarification. My understanding is if you were not here, you're still allowed to approve events. Is that correct? That you're allowed to vote events? I just want to make a use.
Yes, it is. If this is appropriate, and then, uh, Director Who was here in my absence, so, uh, so she technically voted, but to be perfectly, to err on the side of caution, it's, it's, I abstain.
I just want to let her know that you could.
No worries. So do we want to move on to item number six now?
Thank you, Chair, and so that item, yes, it's number six with the LAFCO Retirement Health Benefit Plan Options. Right now we have joining with us from Epic Insurance Brokers, Mr. Bill Laviss, who's giving us the commission a presentation on different retirement and health benefit options to choose from in regards to LAFCO's transition for independence and, Bill, you are welcome to just to give an overview to the commission.
Thanks, Rachel. Hello, everyone. Rachel, quick question for you. Does everybody have the draft document that you and I worked on?
Yes, it was included in the agenda packet and I could share it if that would be helpful.
Well, my, my first question would be, I'll have a couple of opening comments and then I'll get to some questions for the panel here. We were tasked with taking a look at both retirement and health and welfare benefits for the two employees at LAFCO. In a nutshell, uh, there are two, uh, primary options on the retirement side. Staying with Asera or pursuing an option through CalPERS. The information we were able to review and analyze, preliminary conclusion is that the CalPERS retirement plan option could be a more financially attractive option to LAFCO versus Asera. However, we're going to need to have a bit more time to evaluate the entry into CalPERS. We did not have enough of the critical data and in the timeframe that we had to evaluate it, we weren't able to close the loop on that one particular item. But at least the information that we were able to evaluate, it would put CalPERS, again, from a financial standpoint, put CalPERS in a leading position over the Asera option. And, uh, Rachel, I, um, I, so far as protocols is concerned, you want me to just keep talking through and then stop and open up for questions? Or, uh, folks, if you have any questions as I go through these items, do you want to just sing out your questions to me as, as I'm going through this? Rachel, how would you like me to proceed?
I'll refer that to the Chair.
Go ahead and finish with your, your presentation, then we can take questions.
Okay, all right. So far as the health and welfare benefits, uh, I am very familiar with the existing benefits that are currently in place through the county of Alameda. I have been involved with the county of Alameda's programs for about, you know, a little bit over a decade. Um, and currently I am, uh, I work with the county on their ancillary and voluntary benefits, but still very familiar with all their core benefits, medical, dental, vision, et cetera. The two options that we reviewed, uh, one being from CalPERS and the other being from SDRMA. The, the various, you know, attributes of the, of these two programs, you know, we take a look at, you know, what are the medical benefit programs that are offering? What are the ancillary programs, the dental, the vision, the life, the core benefits, and then what other voluntary options might be available? And, and the, the lens that I was looking at was, hey, I'm currently, the menu I have in front of me is Alameda County. So I'm trying to replicate as close as possible those benefits through either of these two, um, options, CalPERS or SDRMA. Uh, again, in summary, the, uh, both uh, options offer robust menu of benefits. From the pricing that we had access to, uh, my conclusion is the pricing is pretty darn similar between the two options. And where the, you know, the scales kind of tipped for me is, would be in the non-benefit side of things. And the, the impression that I came away with looking at the CalPERS side of things, great big huge organization, um, probably not a ton of customer service, or if I had a, if I had a billing issue, if I had a claim issue. Again, how I was looking at this and as just a quick sidebar, for thirty-seven years, I've been advising employer groups of all sizes on their benefit plans. And we get very involved with these groups in terms of how they're going to be serviced, how problems are going to be resolved, who's going to be addressing them? What kind of support services exist out there, uh, that can assist in the management of the plans? And what I came away with from my conversations with CalPERS and in particular the folks at SDRMA and, um, CSDA, that the SDR, SDMRA, uh, option, uh, a very robust, uh, level of services and support behind the scenes for a two-person group that essentially would be running their own plan now. They have, uh, a significant amount of help behind the scenes. They have a very robust menu of voluntary benefits that are available to them and you can access S, the SDRMA benefits, uh, either directly to through SDMRA or through a membership through CSDA. Now, there is a price that comes along with that, um, membership. And, um, and I estimated that, uh, membership dues at somewhere between thirteen hundred and eighteen hundred dollars annually. So then it begs the question, well, what do we get if we get the membership that we don't need if we just want the benefits? What are we getting with S, CSDA? There are workers' compensation and liability insurance options that, um, I did not investigate the need for. It was not part of the initial scope. I certainly can do so, Rachel, um, but we haven't had any follow-up conversations to see what, uh, LAFCO's needs are going to be in that area. If you are going to have needs in that area, then, um, that is certainly something I think would be worthy of further investigation to see if that membership fee is worth the access to those particular benefits. But as things stand right now, all things, uh, being considered, my recommendation would be to take a real hard look and pursue, uh, the benefit offerings through the SDRMA venue as well as, uh, considering the membership in the CSDA.
I had a question, Rachel, don't we already belong to CSDA?
We belong to the A, uh, ACSDA chapter, but we do not, um, currently are a member of the wider organization.
And I recommended to Rachel that we should be a member of the CSDA. There's a lot of benefits to being part of that organization, just even from their little newsletters that you get and updates and there's a forum where you can ask questions about HR and things like that, so I, I think we'd want to do that anyway.
Question. Okay, so I'm looking at your recommendation and I, I mean, there, you made three of them, I think. But the one regarding additional due diligence at CalPERS, because, uh, you mentioned a couple of things that just have to do with employee engagement, maybe that's the terminology, that they may not be as customer friendly as maybe Asera, but it's a twenty percent delta and that's, I mean, that's hard to swallow. It's very hard to swallow. So, um, if we were to do more due diligence, would it be in the area of customer engagement that, you know, that, that employees feel that they're heard and get services? Is that what we would be, or is it something more that we would do?
The additional due diligence is, um, looking at the CalPERS retirement plan entry requirements.
Okay. All right.
And then I, excuse me, uh, Commissioner, I just wanted to speak on the difference in that rate and it seems that, LAFCO was paying into a, um, bond in the nineteen nineties. That contributed to a benefit reduction of around like that nine percent. And, um, the county is not, I guess, willing to provide that, um, reduction if we were to join Asera as a participating employer.
Okay.
And Rachel, isn't it true then that ACRA would also pay for health benefits for a retiree?
Yes.
Which CalPERS will not, will not do.
I, and excuse me, Bill, could you, um, I don't know if that's something that needs to be investigated more if CalPERS would, um, plan for post-retirement health benefits. I do think that is an option, but I don't think that was included in the cost of this report.
Correct. I, I can do some additional research on that for you.
So Rachel, are we ready to make a decision today or it sounds like we need more information?
I think, yes, that would be the best case at this time to receive more information. I do know, you know, time is of the essence, but, um, I will work at least behind the scenes to see if there's anything that we can do, just helping to determine and provide the commission the best data information and if, whether we need to have a special meeting in the interim to get things going, um, I will contact the commission on that.
Or you could do the policy and.
Yeah, if, if the commission would grant the policy and budget committee, um, to at least, you know, make a recommendation or.
Yeah, we would have a meeting in October, so if you want to.
Correct.
Maybe take it to us first and then if, if we have a, if we feel good about it, we could maybe schedule a special meeting?
Correct, that would be a great idea, Chair.
Like, plan for everybody? It's like everybody's.
It's gonna be for a while.
Yeah.
So it doesn't seem that there's any issue with formal, beginning formal discussions with CD, RMA, or joining CSDA, right? Is that consensus?
Yeah.
It's really about CalPERS versus Asera, that's really what we're.
Yeah.
Right.
And I know from my experience with CalPERS, the people I've talked to, it's, it's a nightmare, just a bureaucracy. You have to have resolutions for virtually everything that you do and then they'll find something where you didn't do it, then you've got to go back and redo it. So it can be a lot of bureaucratic, uh, work as opposed to Asera, which I don't believe, I haven't heard that complaint about it, so.
Could I make a request to the commission or Chair on, you know, if staff could move forward with entering an agreement with SDRMA to.
Yeah.
For health benefits and join at CSDA?
That makes sense to me.
Yeah. Need a motion for that or?
We have to.
Or just give you direction?
Oh, and excuse me, um, there are, uh, time for public comment, we do see one hand from Zoom.
So you open the public. Hi there, am I able to screen share? I have a short slideshow that goes with my statement.
No, thank you.
No, okay, one moment and.
You have three minutes. All right.
Somebody's missed that much time. Too much time. How much time was that? I think it was you all. Okay, okay. What was this?
He was wrong.
He wanted to, uh, take over the slideshow, it's like, we don't do that. Okay. So I think he's, uh, he had his opportunity and he didn't take it, so move it on.
He's gone again.
Yes, excuse me, Chair, I think we had some rebel rouser here, so, um, there's no other comments from the public, at least on Zoom.
Okay. So do you, do you have enough direction, Rachel? Or do we need resolution or a motion to?
Just, I think we do need a motion for this item, um, and it would be to, uh, move forward with SDRMA and then join CSDA and then, uh, have our consultant, um, present more in-depth analysis to our policy and budget committee meeting and we'll decide whether if we need to have a special meeting, um, before our November meeting with the decision.
So move. You have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Any, uh, further discussion or public input? Thank you for stating that so well. Chair, and I'm assuming this is a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshawn. Commissioner Miley. Commissioner Miley. Thank you. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
And Commissioner Who?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Move to item number five now, Rachel?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So right now, uh, the commission will receive a presentation from representatives from the Castlewood Homeowners Association. And excuse me, there was a mistake written in the agenda report saying county service area, but it's the homeowners association. And, um, they wanted to present the findings regarding the existing conditions report prepared by Burks and Associates. Um, the report evaluates the governance, service delivery and financial condition of the district and identifies potential alternative governance structures, including annexation to the city of Pleasanton. So right now, um, I'll just have, um, uh, Representatives Mike Mitchell, um, present a report and I believe we have Richard Burks and also, um, who will provide information to the commission.
Chair, if I could, uh, just make a disclosure, I, I am a member of the Club of Castlewood, which is a owner in the, the CSA, I think, I believe that that's true. Although, as, as an equity member, I don't know if it much use or, I mean, it's a good use, I don't know if it much value in terms of controlling anything, but I just wanted to disclose that. I know this is just a presentation, but.
You're, you're a club member, not a, not a homeowner.
I'm not a homeowner, yeah.
Yeah. It concerns mostly the homeowners.
Yeah, right.
Hi, everybody. My name is indeed Mike Mitchell and I am indeed a resident of the Castlewood area. I'm also the vice president of the Castlewood Property Owners Association. I grew up in Alameda County in Fremont, lived in Sanola, Pleasanton. But I, and, and I know with my gray hair, I look like I'm fairly old, but I still wasn't around in nineteen sixty-seven when, uh, the CSA was actually formed. And a few things has changed, uh, since nineteen sixty-seven. They used to call the Club of Castlewood, the Castlewood, uh, Dude Ranch at the old, old Hearst Ranch. And, uh, the Tri-Valley area in general was a low cost of living area. And so when, uh, the area around Castlewood started to be developed, it made sense, um, to reach out to Alameda County to form a CSA for things like the roads. The club itself was handling the roads in the area and they wanted to get out of that business. And then in nineteen seventy-nine, they wanted to get out of the water and sewer business. So again, at the time with the low cost of living area, uh, forming a CSA made sense. Now, since then, uh, we've done some significant infrastructure improvements, um, including in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, redoing all the water and sewer and in, uh, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, we put in new water tanks. There's about, uh, two hundred plus, um, depending upon what service you're talking about, around two hundred and forty, uh, homes within the CSA. And, uh, over time, this wasn't always the case, but by now we're completely surrounded by Pleasanton, um, on, on three sides here. The current state of Castlewood, um, you know, we've gone from sixty-seven, seventy-nine being a low cost of living area to now being in a very high cost of living area. And the economies of scale with two hundred plus properties means that it being an isolated island just doesn't work anymore. All of our infrastructure costs, um, are higher than the surrounding area, while at the same time, our services are frankly less than, uh, you know, places like Dublin or Pleasanton. You know, our roads aren't as good, um, our water services aren't as good, all that kind of stuff. And at the same time, as a property owner, you know, I went and looked at all the different costs that people, um, pay in Alameda County for their property tax and, you know, uh, in, in Castlewood, we pay more than anywhere else in Alameda County because of the CSA charges, you know, which includes the water and road and service charges. But at the end of the day, our property tax bill is higher, but our services are lower, right? And a lot, that's largely due to economies of scale. So, uh, you know, last year we had a hundred and seventy-two percent increase in water maintenance costs, just to give you an idea. You know, we have some fancy dancy residents in Castlewood, but you know what? We also have a lot of people that are retired and on fixed incomes and this is really starting to kill them and push them out of, uh, the Castlewood area, which is a shame to see. So Castlewood urgently needs a new municipal model. We got to move to something different. The CSA is just dated, just isn't working for us anymore. And so we started looking at different options. And, uh, we looked at either becoming annexed by Pleasanton or forming a community service district or CSD. We contracted with Richard Burks and, and Richard's on the line now, um, and he did an existing conditions report, uh, for the Castlewood CSA. For those of you that don't know, Richard Burks, and he's well recommended, um, by, uh, multiple, uh, different people that we talked to as like the guy to come and do this kind of work and, uh, we're happy with his work so far. And, uh, from his report and other discussions that we've been having, annexation to Pleasanton seems to make the most sense. It makes more sense than forming a community service district and it's what we'd like to pursue over time. We also, and this, this map always makes me laugh, I mean, it's just obvious, it's just time, you know, for Castlewood to become part of Pleasanton, right? But it really is a win-win for both communities. We've had discussions with the city, we've had discussions with Alameda County and the supervisors and of course, the residents, it's a pretty tightly knit community. Nobody's against the idea. I appreciate that the devils are in the details, but this isn't something where somebody's pushing for something and somebody else isn't. This seems like a win for everybody involved. Castlewood, um, you know, will continue, the residents will continue putting up the money to fund things where appropriate, including the preliminary annexation proposal, which we're planning to do, uh, with Richard Burks. And then once Pleasanton is ready, uh, we'd like to do this full detailed annexation analysis and that's why I'm before you today, is that we want some help with that annexation analysis. So here's our ask, um, as I mentioned, we're going to fund the preliminary, uh, annexation proposal, that's around five K. The detailed analysis though will be more like twenty K. And so, you know, and we, we need to wait for Pleasanton to be ready because it doesn't make sense to do the detail work until Pleasanton is willing to, like, give us access to the resources. resources. And again, they're willing. It's just a timing thing. You know, they, they've got a lot on their plate right now, and as soon as the door opens, um, we want to be ready to go with, uh, Richard Burksen and team. And so what we're asking is for LAFCO to fund half the cost of that twenty K. If it goes over twenty K, we'll cover the difference. So it's just a flat amount that we're asking for the ten K. Um, but that's our request to the commission. Um, and as I mentioned before, the work would be done by Richard Burksen, and as I mentioned before, he's been, uh, the guy that everybody is pointing to. We double-checked on you, Richard, and everybody says nice things. So, uh, he seems to be the guy to go to. And with that, um, I think I'll hand the next slide over to Richard, and I can flip for you, Richard, and you can go ahead and take over.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, uh, Mike, and I, um, appreciate the kudos. Um, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Richard Burksen of Burksen Associates, and uh, I've actually been before, uh, your LAFCO a number of times over the past several years, including more, most recently, um, uh, discussing and presenting the incorporation study that I prepared for, uh, Alameda County Communities. Um, I was, as Mike indicated, I was hired, um, by the Property Owners Association to prepare a uh, draft existing conditions report. Uh, the, the purpose of this report is, uh, not so much to, uh, uh, arrive at findings or conclusions per se, but really to provide a database of current information, uh, that can serve as a baseline for, uh, further analysis of governance options. Uh, so I'll, um, I'll touch briefly on some of the key findings or highlights of the report, which, uh, should be included with your packet. The, um, the CSA boundary encompasses nearly six hundred acres, serves a population of over six hundred residents and more than two hundred homes, uh, and also, uh, two golf courses and a country club. And, uh, it's not only, as Mike pointed out, not only surrounded by the city of Pleasanton on three sides, but it's also within, um, the city's sphere of influence. The CSA is responsible for operation and maintenance of water, sewer, and roads. Uh, services are provided by the CSA through agreements with various public agencies, um, including, uh, the city of Pleasanton in some cases, and, and also contracts with private firms. Uh, the county of Alameda, um, their public works, um, agency staff manage and administer the affairs of the CSA. As far as sewer services go, um, CSA is responsible for over five miles of sewer pipeline maintained by a private contractor. Uh, there's a pump station, uh, maintained by the city under contract to the CSA. And then the effluent is treated at the Dublin-San Ramon facility. The CSA owns, uh, its, uh, treatment capacity and also has, uh, purchased in the past, capacity sufficient for another fifty or so dwelling unit equivalents. Um, I could find no, uh, overflows, uh, or SSOs reported over the past five years from, uh, public information. Uh, the CSA is also responsible for over six miles of water lines, again, maintained by a private contractor. The SFPUC owns and operates wells which provide the CSA with, in Castlewood, with up to ninety million gallons a day, uh, per year, uh, at no cost to the CSA. Um, if usage goes over that amount, there are overage charges, and uh, apparently that has happened of, in a few cases. Um, Mike mentioned that the CSA recently replaced its wooden tanks with steel storage tanks, uh, which, uh, should help with, uh, reducing, uh, leakage. Uh, that project was funded primarily through a state loan of three million dollars. Uh, not surprisingly, uh, costs escalated over the, uh, construction period, so, um, it did end up costing somewhat more than that. Um, ninety percent of the CSA's water system was replaced in, um, nineteen ninety-six. Um, so it's in good condition, uh, although there are some additional capital improvements that have been proposed. The CSA is also, uh, also provides road maintenance. Uh, the county handles the maintenance. Um, however, the CSA has an annual assessment, uh, which covers those costs. Uh, there are some major road resurfacing projects that are proposed for the CSA in the future. I looked at the CSA's budget, um, in addition to annual assessments that are paid by residents and by the, uh, golf course and clubhouse for sewer, water, and road maintenance, um, which funds operations and capital. Uh, the CSA's general fund also receives about sixty to seventy thousand dollars annually in property tax and also uh, interest earnings. Uh, looking at the budget showed, uh, past several years of annual net shortfalls, uh, partly as a result of, um, the cost overages that I mentioned, uh, emergency repairs, turnover of, uh, contractors, and uh, general cost inflation and other things. Um, shortfalls, um, were covered ultimately by a loan from the county's revolving loan fund. Uh, and that loan was in the amount of about one point four million, which the CSA, the residents, will be repaying over uh, the next ten years. And, uh, the rates and assessments of residents have been adjusted upwards to provide for that repayment. Uh, in, in evaluating or, or compiling the financial information, it was a bit of a challenge. Uh, the Property Owners Association has done quite a bit of work. Um, there hasn't been a, a formal audit, uh, since fiscal year twenty-two, so, uh, there was a lack of, uh, good information. Um, but nonetheless, the report, the existing conditions report does provide estimates of, uh, the CSA's financial condition. So as I said, this information provides a, uh, oh, and the report also briefly reviewed. I think this is probably the next bullet, Mike. The report briefly reviewed, uh, the governance options, which Mike has al- already mentioned. Uh, didn't prepare any analysis, um, as I said. Uh, however, if, uh, if the property owners do proceed, then the next step would be, uh, well, first of all, a proposal for the annexation, which, um, would summarize and describe the, uh, proposal. Um, but, and the more detailed annexation analysis report, which, uh, is listed on the next slide, um, includes a number of components. Um, it will include a plan for services. It will do a fiscal analysis to estimate short and long-term costs and revenues uh, to the city, uh, which will include property tax. It'll identify implications for, uh, Castlewood residents and for city residents and city services. It'll document, um, assets and liabilities. In collaboration with the city staff, uh, the analysis will review infrastructure conditions and identify, uh, any needs and related costs. Uh, I, I mentioned the report will also look at impacts on residents of Castlewood and Pleasanton, if any. The report will describe the transition process, uh, if it moves forward, and any mitigations required, if, if any. And ultimately, this information will provide a basis for a LAFCO application and, uh, for the process that follows. And, and the report, of course, will address, uh, issues or questions that might arise during, uh, the course of its preparation. So that completes, uh, a high-level overview of the existing conditions report and also the, uh, the next steps i- if, uh, if it's decided to move forward. So at this point, I'll turn it back to Mike and, um, uh, and questions, if any.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Bob?
It, it certainly, uh, sounds like this is something that needs to, uh, get done. I was wondering, in terms of the, uh, analysis, are there any, um, going in constraints or assumptions? Because I've read in the news, I think that, uh, Castlewood has said that they're, they'll make sure that the Pleasanton residents aren't subsidizing, so that's.
That's right.
Constant. Okay, so that's a constraint. I think what I've also heard here is you pointed out that you've got one of the highest sort of contributions to the county, but one of the least, um, you know, receiving from the county. Is there any sense from the county that they'll change the percentage of the amount of money that you, that's taken from you that will be given back to you, or is that, uh, is that also going to stay the same?
So I don't know if Supervisor Hubbard wants to say anything. I'll say to a, a couple of things. One is that nothing's been decided, so. Yeah, but preliminarily, the idea is, is that there would be, uh, fair tax sharing. The, the problem with the CSA is that we don't have a model to get back, uh, significant amount of the Avalon property tax that we pay.
So I, I wasn't necessarily looking for answers right now. I just wanted to suggest
Yeah.
that as the study goes, wow, that some of these initial assumptions and constraints of where the parties are coming from.
Yeah.
Are, you know, enumerated in advance.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm really not asking you to answer this.
Okay.
So the, so that's this, so that's the request, that when the LAFCO funds this, which I'm in favor of, you know, giving that, that it be clear what the assumptions are going in. And that's, so what is, uh, is Pleasanton subsidizing this? Uh, is, is there any change in the, um, percentage of the revenues that the county receives from Castlewood? Going to, and that they give back to Castlewood and that is, so the question is, what are the constraints, assumptions that'll set up in basic economics? Because that's what ultimately this is about. I mean, there's also one other thing I can think of. It was alluded to, well, the economies of scale. So, so is this the plot that it will be cheaper to maintain of the infrastructure if it's done at scale through Pleasanton? So that's a saving. So I'm just wondering, it would be real important to give extreme clarity on the numbers, and going in assumptions should be enumerated as the study is carried out.
I've got a couple of questions. Um, now, I, I don't see the country club here today. Are they in support of this?
So, um, I, I'm, I'm not authorized to speak for the country club, but, um, they've got about, uh, fourteen, depending upon whether you're talking about, you know, sewer or roads or whatever, they've got about fourteen of the, let's call it two hundred and forty votes, just so you get an idea of how much say that they have. Now, in my opinion, just like I can say it about the county or a city of Pleasanton, the club is in favor of it. Um, and the residents are fa- nobody's against it that I know of. Let's just put it that way. Um, it, it just makes sense. It's not, it, I don't think it's controversial, you know?
I, I think we all agree. I, I actually worked for the county for a long time and was involved with Castlewood. And we've, we, we've attempted many times to have the city take it over, because that, that's really what makes sense.
Yeah, I, I'll say in the past, like, um, I think some people in Castlewood thought, oh, you know, we want to be independent, you know? And, and it's fine if you can afford to be.
Right.
They can't afford to be anymore.
Yeah. Uh, another, maybe this is a question for Richard. Maybe another, um, I mean, Bob brought it up. Is there equity between the city of, the, the residents of Pleasanton's right now paying for service for Castlewood? What we've seen before, or maybe the, maybe it's, maybe the CSA as part of the annexation gets transferred to the city, and the city then runs the CSA and the, and the associated costs along with that. Is that something you've thought about?
Well, so the, and actually, Richard can speak to this better than I can, probably, but the assets of the CSA get transferred to Pleasanton, you know, um, and the, so we would just be part of Pleasanton. It wouldn't be Pleasanton running the CSA. It would be Castlewood's, a district within Pleasanton.
Okay.
And that's it. And we certainly would have our own, I think we'd be probably be, um, zoned as an independent thing, just because that makes sense for Pleasanton. Um, and that we don't have things like sidewalks or whatever, but we'd be part of the, the assets, like, including the sewer and water lines, gets transferred to Pleasanton.
Yeah, right. And I'll, I'll just add one comment to that is, uh, that's an example of some of the mitigations that the report will consider. For example, uh, after transfer to the city of Pleasanton, it may be that the city could create a, a zone, basically, that uh, corresponds to Castlewood, so that to the extent that that uh, treatment plant or water delivery or other services, um, costs significantly more, at least in the near term, um, those would be isolated to Castlewood residents. And hopefully, it would transition over time as it became integrated, but that's an example of, uh, potential mitigation to help avoid or minimize or eliminate, uh, any sort of subsidy. Uh, and also, I mentioned that there'll be a fiscal analysis, uh, conducted, so there may be other benefits, financial benefits to the city as well, perhaps. Uh, there'll be some increase, uh, in their scale. Uh, there'll be various other municipal revenues they receive in addition to the property tax, which uh, may yet, um, be negotiated, but a city will get additional road fund revenues, for example, and, and various other revenues that will grow as a result of Castlewood being annexed. But we'll be looking at that just to determine if it is a positive or negative or, or break even.
Nate has a hand up.
So I, I would like to just, um, defer to my senior county supervisor, who.
Not senior.
And experienced. I'd say more experienced, but, because he had Castlewood in his district for many years. It's now in my district, but I would like to, uh, hear from Supervisor Miley. I'll simply stop and say, I'm looking forward to getting the information from this study. And, um, that indeed, um, one of the, the questions that, uh, Mr. Werner me- mentioned are super important to, uh, to answer, but Nate had his hand up first.
Okay.
I just wanted to first make a statement that's definitely supportive of this effort moving forward. Because as, you know, David pointed out, I represented Castlewood on the Board of Supervisors for many years. Prior to redistricting, Supervisor Hagerty represented it. Then we, another redistricting, and recently Supervisor Hubbard decided to take it over. So yes, um, we've worked with Castlewood over the years. There have been definitely, uh, uh, concerns about how we're going to deliver, uh, services there, the CSA. So I'm just very pleased that you're seeing this willingness on all sides to go forward with this, uh, annexation analysis. The, uh, thing I would ask Richard, though, was pointed out that it would cost about twenty grand, and I, and I have no problem, um, I go, I think ten grand. It just seemed that, that twenty grand was a little low.
Well, um, no, that's a good question. Um, I wouldn't mind, uh, increasing the budget, but I also want to uh, be as efficient as possible, um, recognizing that I've already done this existing conditions study, um, which the property owners have paid for. So if that hadn't been done, then uh, the twenty thousand would definitely be, um, more. It could, it'd be closer to thirty to forty thousand more likely. Um, and also, this study will look at the property tax exchange. Um, but if, if I'm involved in significant negotiations or revisions to the existing or whatever existing tax sharing agreement is, there is, then, then that could increase the budget as well over time.
All right. I just wanted to flag that, because I haven't been involved in a few, uh, corporations as well as annexation over the years, you know, with LAFCO, twenty-five years. I just thought that figured, looked a little low in your explanation. You know, they were black or twenty-five years. I just thought that figured looked a little low in your explanation.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the comment.
One of the questions, uh, did I read in the newspaper recently that, uh, Castlewood rejected a utility rate increase by the county?
Yeah, that, that's correct. And that was, uh, rejected after, uh, Richard Burksen completed the report. But when his presentation, he mentioned a one point four million dollar assessment. And, uh, the residents, ninety-two percent of the residents voted against the assessment, uh, by our count. Uh, ninety-two percent. And, uh, so that was rejected. And, but it was part of, it's part of the issue is that, uh.
Mike, it's not the rate increase. It was a special assessment.
Yeah, special assessment.
Two different things.
Yeah, thanks.
They did not reject the rate increase because we never knew about the rate increase until it was put forth to us about a month or two before. But when they did the special assessment, then the, we, under Prop two eighteen, we then voted to, you know, opposition to that increase.
Yeah. So to be clear, rate increase, we accepted, uh, one-time charge, we rejected. Yeah.
Cause I, my experience, I come from the Alameda County Water District. Uh, and one of the pieces of history of Alameda County Water District is that they were required to take over the citizens' utility. Uh, because citizens' utility have been there for years. It's one of these things where, you know, citizens always do a better job. Um, they finally had, Alameda County had to come in and replace the wooden mains. Because the wooden mains were rotting out and failing. So, uh, and, you know, similar sort of thing here where the, the tanks were failing. You had a fifty, almost fifty percent, uh, water loss, uh, on account of water loss. Uh, so obviously the system had been allowed to, uh, degrade. And so it cost a city a lot of money to bring it back up. Uh, one of the concerns I have is, uh, uh, when ACWD took over citizens' utility, there was a significant, uh, amount of infrastructure that had to be replaced. And that resulted in, in a two-tiered, uh, system to, uh, to reimburse ACWD for its costs. Uh, and, uh, I'm thinking of, uh, uh, you know, does Pleasanton actually want this? Uh, because I keep thinking of the Remen Track. And, you know, we've been dealing with the Remen Track for, oh, close to the twenty years that I've been on this board. Uh, and that hasn't gotten resolved yet, because there's gonna be significant, you know, costs to bring this up to the system, uh, up to, uh, the system, up to, uh, to, uh, to code. And I, I look at, uh, the estimate in the, uh, in the report that says the, the infrastructure's gonna last for a hundred years. Um, I come from the water industry. Nothing's gonna last for a hundred years.
Yeah.
Uh, there's pump stations, there's treatment systems, there's all these different things, and that's not gonna last for a hundred years. And we're now thirty years into the next system. And, you know, I've seen, uh, the, uh, the, the laterals have failed. The, uh, 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 partners have failed, you know, so it's not gonna last a hundred years. And I just don't wanna see another system where it begins to slowly degrade. And then somebody else has to make up the, the difference.
I'm not sure, to be honest, how much this is the proper form to get into this. Um, but I just wanna be clear, the one-time assessment that was rejected by the homeowners was for, um, repairs that, emergency repairs that the county did, that we think were, uh, those issues were caused by a lack of maintenance by the county. And this is part of the reason that the homeowners were so upset about it. And there's, to this day, there's, uh, existing, um, preventive maintenance that we think needs to happen, that we will pay for, um, that got caught up in that and that is being held. And, uh, we're having good discussions, uh, with the county about that, uh, you know, and trying to move forward. But it's not, I wouldn't call it a lack of attention by the, uh, homeowners, nor would I call it a lack of willingness to spend money on preventive maintenance by the homeowners. Um, also, I think that this is why it behooves Pleasanton to zone Castlewood independently. Because if any surprises do come up, they can put a special assessment just on that, you know, zone, as opposed to ha- hitting all of Pleasanton, which honestly, I think this is gonna be so positive for Pleasanton. I, I mean, it's really a no-brainer. It's gonna be so positive for the residents. Cause what we're doing right now by running our water system is it's a hundred percent outsourced to some people in Morgan Hill who drive up to Pleasanton to service our system. It's ridiculous. No, that's the no-brainer. And, and why is that? Is cause, uh, Alameda County's not in the water service business anymore. They were in sixty-seven, but they're not now. So Pleasanton should be running our water system. Uh, if they don't wanna contract to do it, then let's go ahead and annex and let them take over the, the water and the sewer and the roads and all that kind of stuff. It just makes sense for everybody.
But is, is this something that Pleasanton wants to do?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we went to their city council planning workshop and three of the five, uh, um, council members voted to accelerate discussions on, uh, annexation of Castlewood. Because it was number seventy-four on their list of eighty-four priorities for the, for the city. And three out of the five voted to move it up on their list. Now, what, wha- what does that mean on when they're gonna work for it? We don't have a date. Like, they could start working on it in six months. They could start working on it in a year. We don't know for sure. Um, and I don't wanna pretend like Pleasanton is, like, giving us a date, cause they haven't. But, but they're in. They, they wanna do it. It's, it's gonna be cash positive to them. There's four point one million dollars in ad valorem tax revenue that goes to the county right now that we can't access. Because as a CSA, because we don't, you know, half of that, more than half of that goes to public services and education, as it should. But there's a big chunk of that that usually goes back to municipality and we can't access it as a CSA.
That's exactly the point, right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I got it.
Would. Go ahead. I was gonna say, uh, you know, John mentioned the Remen Track. Now, if the city is willing to take a non, non-standard, uh, community roads and stuff like in, in Castlewood, would that extend to the Remen Track as well?
Yeah, but maybe.
Ask the people that live in the Remen Track. They'll have a different answer.
Yeah, exactly.
It's all about local control as well. Castlewood, local control, wants this to happen if Pleasanton accepts it, and I think that they will, you're right. Then great. Remen Track's on a different, uh, residents of Remen Track.
You should know, right?
Yeah.
That there's zero soft impact to Pleasanton. We're already driving on their roads. My kids went to their schools. There's no, it, it's not like a new development. Everybody already, you know, we go to the Costco, right? It's, everybody does that already, so.
Right. Yes. All right. So let me, I ask a, so I see, I read the staff report and, uh, the recommendation is to, uh, provide direction regarding whether allocate funds toward the requested phase to study. Now, I, I heard Mike say, ten grand, not a dollar more. Wha- what are we being asked to approve here? Is it say to spend no more than ten grand? Or is that gonna come back to us? Cause then I read further, should commission wish to proceed, staff return with a, at a future meeting with a funding agreement. So what are you asking us to do, uh, with, with respect to that?
So it's, um, up to the commission to decide to contribute the ten thousand dollars towards the study. And if yes, then staff would come back with a contract agreement, uh, for the commission to approve.
Okay, so then that, then let me jump to the next set of questions. How much of this, I mean, we're supposed to do municipal service review of the CSA, and when was the last time we did one of, of Castlewood?
So Castlewood, um, we did a street improvement, um, service review. That was in fall of, I wanna say, two thousand twenty-three.
All right. And then, and the, let, let me ask her, ask questions, okay? Um, so then the previous one was five so years before that, right?
It did note that their, uh, street, there, you know, there was a, um, excuse me, uh, uh, a backlog in, for, uh, Castlewood's street improvements a bit. And their, um, representatives from the homeowners association did voice concerns about the road improvements. Um, and I did a site visit at that time. So it did lead to recommendations of the commission further looking into, um, you know, issues with Castlewood and working with the county on that.
Again, where I'm going, where I'm going with this is, is, is I'm not so sure I'm opposed to, to spend ten grand. But I think it, it, it needs to fit within a budget item we have. Uh, I, I, I'm just a little uncomfortable, you know, on a one-off, cause I don't wanna call this a one-off. I mean, I think it's needed. I think we should study it. But if we can fit it into an existing budget, uh, in our budget, that, you know, this is something we should have stuttered, we should studying, then I'm a lot more comfortable with it. Um, because, um, um, you know, cause if it wasn't done, or because, you know, for whatever reason, right? If it fits into a future cer- municipal service review, that's also acceptable to me, that we've done something, we spent good money and not just for these particular property owners. That, that's where I'm, I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't want to foolish, not foolishly, but spend money that we're entrusted with unless we know it's something that is within, for sure, within our mission. And that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I think it is, but I, I wanna hear from you, Rachel, that this somehow can fit in to either, you know, something we should've been doing, we just had a time for it, or something in the future that we would probably have to do.
It doesn't set a precedent.
Yes, it doesn't set a precedent that, for others.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, for voicing, you know, those concerns, which are completely valid. I wanna say right now, you know, on our work plan, I, you know, doubt thoroughly looking at it right now, but off the top of my head, I wouldn't say that this study would fit into that. I would say it would fit prob- perhaps in a future municipal service review, um, on our study schedule. Um, but, you know, that would require the commission to, um, at least we could schedule it for our next fiscal year.
And that's what I'd like to see, is that in essence, we're preloading for a future service municipal, because we have the opportunity. We have a partner who's actually willing to fund a portion of what we otherwise would have to do in the future. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Can I ask a question then? So the, I think the last water and sewer, uh, MSR was in twenty twenty-one. And so if you guys bundle this into a new MSR, do we have to pay for any of it? Or do you guys pay for all of it?
Yeah. We, we pay for all of it.
We pay for that. You know, won't hold it up, time-wise? Might hope you held up.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just, you know, again.
We don't have to do it every five years.
So, yeah, I'm just wondering on Pleasanton's timeline, cause we can't execute until Pleasanton's ready. So it just might happen, you know? Um, if Pleasanton starts in six months and that'll be twenty twenty-six, that's five years since our last water and sewer MSR.
Well, I mean, that, that, you guys can just, you know, you can talk about that if you wanna wait a year. Is twenty-one, is, I thought it was twenty-three or twenty-one? Twenty-three.
Two thousand twenty-one for the wastewater and stormwater and, um, water study. So, uh, next fiscal year, that would be twenty twenty-six. That would be five years.
I mean, you guys can have that discussion, I think, right? I mean, if, if you wanna wait and put it on our, our dime.
I, I, I'll be really honest with you. If Pleasanton came to me tomorrow and said, hey, we wanna go right now, I wouldn't even be talking to you guys. I'd just spend the twenty grand and get it done, right?
Yeah.
Um, but if it's, just happens that it works out, then that's great too, you know?
Well, you can have an alternative. I mean, if Pleasanton is so gun- and, and I share Commissioner Marchand's, you know, he and I, and, and Commissioner Miley have been here a long time. And that Remen Track has been a, a little thorn in our side. Um, if you, if you're not familiar with where, do you, are you familiar where it is?
I, I am, but I don't know all the nuances that, uh, I'm hearing being suggested.
Yeah, it's, it, you know, it, it is, it's an island. It's completely encircled by Pleasanton. If you go down, drive down Vineyard and look north and you see all those streets without any curbs or gutters or.
Yeah.
It's, and, uh, uh, up to the creek, up to the Arroyo, that's, uh, all, all the way to Bernal and whatever that is. Yeah, I'm trying to think, you know, whatever, you know, that, that is basically a rectangle. That's the Remen Track.
Well, Pleasanton increased their service costs by a hundred and seventy-two percent. Maybe they'd come and wanna be annexed too. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, um, but I, you know, I, I don't, I, I think a lot of this discussion is useful and, and purposeful. But I, I do think that, uh, the point is to get to the next step and I, I, that's something I'm favorable. Thank you.
Can I have a few questions? Thank you. So very quick. So what's the procedure like? Do you need to go to the Pleasanton City Council? Or are there any, like, voters decision? The voters are Pleasanton voters or just the Castlewood?
I, I, I'll give you my opinion and, uh, other people in the room might, uh, uh, correct me or on the Zoom. But, um, so yeah, uh, the Pleasanton City Council has to allocate the resources to do the analysis. And then the Pleasanton City Council could choose to execute on it. Um, and as long as no more than twenty-five percent of the Castlewood residents object to it. Um, and nobody within Pleasanton tries to force it to come to a vote. If, if neither one of those things happened, then it, it could literally just happen within six months. Like, we could end up just, if there's no objections from Pleasanton City Council, less than twenty-five percent of Castlewood residents don't object, it could just happen.
Thank you.
But it includes negotiations with the county on property tax sharing and all that kinda stuff. So I'm not saying it actually happened in six months, but it would, it would be moving, you know?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I wanted to build on what Commissioner Splendour was talking about, as to whether this was in the budget. And, you know, what's the purview of LAPCO? And I would have thought, this is, I think it's a very good question, that, um, this LAPCO, maybe others, is trying to help the community figure out the best, um, governmental relation, uh, uh, setups. And so I, didn't we have similar conversations when we were talking about trying to help, uh, Castro Valley get going? So isn't, is, it strikes me as this is similar. I didn't re- I can't remember, but wasn't Castro Valley helped in some way with some, um, studies or something?
So, uh, in a, yes, so staff did, um, uh, recommend to the commission to conduct a, uh, uh, comprehensive, a pre, I think it was a pre-comprehensive, um, fiscal impact study on, um, you know, what that would look like for, uh, Castro Valley to become their own city and incorporate and to become their own city. Um, and then just also to address, excuse me, I made a mistake, um, that community services MSR, that was conducted last year. Um, and the final report, I believe, was presented to the commission at our, uh, November meeting. Um, and one of the recommendations in the report, I just wanna say, is LAPCO should conduct further studies on the ability of the county public works department to provide adequate services to Castlewood residents. I'm not saying whether this would fall into that, but I just wanted to remind the commission on one of those recommendations.
Just trying to close on this. I think, uh, it was my impression that these kinds of things, um, were within the purview of mission statement of LAPCO. But I think Splend, you've got a good point. Uh, they, they kinda don't happen all the time. But perhaps we should explicitly put in the budget some nominal amount. Not that we would expect to spend it. There would be a variance, but I don't know that we need to. Yeah, we should allow it in the budget to some extent. But I think we should more formally, as Splend, as you've said, let's just make it clear that this isn't unusual and it's actually part of the way LAPCO helps the community.
I would, I would actually go just say, update, maybe the next, the next hearing, update our work plan. And if we need it, if you can't find the money in somewhere, then update our budget. And then I think we're, if, you know, when other people look at our budget or work, well, no, it's right in there. And you can tee off the, what the recommendation was last year and just say, well, we now have the opportunity. We updated our work plan. We updated our budget and here we are. We're, 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 you know, we have, we feel if somebody questions us, our budget, our work plan, well, no, no, we, you know, it came up and we're good.
And this other track that you're worried about, and you can say, hey, look guys, there's money here. You wanna help?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll add that in addition to conducting municipal service reviews, there's additional authority in the Cortez-Zydokszerszberg Act to conduct studies of public agencies and, um, to solicit funds from public and private parties to conduct those studies. Um, in conducting those studies, public agencies are required to respond to LAPCO's information requests. And the resulting study has to be made available to the public. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, so which, are you raising a question? Well, never, it's, is this being done on behalf of the property owners or on behalf of the CSA? Cause if it's, if it's, are you saying that since we're funding it or partially funding it, it's gotta be made public just even though it's being performed by the property owners? Or are you saying we, it should be under the CSA or shouldn't be under our purview? I'm just wondering, what are you, what are you getting at?
Well, what I'm getting at is the, the authority to, in response to some of your comments, Commissioner, about conducting the study within the context of a municipal service review, there's this separate authority to conduct studies outside of the municipal service reviews. And in the course of doing so, there are, uh, there's authority to solicit funds from private parties. and then the, the authority to demand records from public agencies and the obligation to produce the report to the public. So I would propose that if the commission decides not to pursue this study through the MSR, if it wants to move forward the study, that this alternative authority be used and to explain what those opportunities and constraints are.
Um, okay, well, I'm not willing to, I'm sorry, Bob.
All right, sorry. Just one more thing. I, I think we're not trying to just make free money available. So the, you know, the thought of matching funds or some, they've got to have some skin in the game too. But to the extent that there's serious interest in doing something that's really better for the whole community, then I would think LAFCO would want to help, but not necessarily take on the whole burden. And the people who are really going to benefit need to really be behind it and make an effort.
But I guess that gets to, to what I'm saying about this code section, is it, it allows LAFCO to conduct these studies and, and could accept a contribution from the Property Owners Association to do that. There isn't an explicit authority here to have LAFCO contribute funds to the Property Owners Association, for the Property Owners Association to conduct a study.
Oh, I, that's a good refinement, and I wasn't suggesting that we're giving money to others. So maybe that's a nuance here, that we got to figure out the constraint on how this money happens. You're saying that, that what's currently proposed isn't the optimal way to do it?
I, I, I'm sorry. We can give money to you guys. You guys can't give money to us. So you can contract with Berksen, and we'll contribute as a private entity, which is fine by us. Honestly, if LAFCO has its name on it, it, it gives it more credibility, so that's good by us.
Right, so I'm ready for a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. I try this. So I, I, I think that's a wiser place for us, that, I mean, and, and I'm happy to take your money as behalf of the commission. So whatever the arrangement is, that up to ten grand funded by our commission, the balance for Berksen Associates come from the property owners, that it, but it be under LAFCO, our LAFCOs, and whatever, Aegis or jurisdiction, and, so which is basically alternative one of the staff recommendation, and, and that you then further negotiate whatever the financial arrangement is to facilitate that this study get completed. Is that?
And then staff will also update our work plan.
Yes, and update the work plan and our budget.
So that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion or public comment? Hearing none. Is that a roll call vote?
Chair Johnson?
Oh, aye.
Commissioner Furia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Marchand?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley?
Yes.
Commissioner Splendorio?
Aye.
Commissioner Hu?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Take care, everybody. Thanks. Thank you all. No more public comment? You, you guys don't want to talk?
Tomorrow.
Okay, so move on to item number seven, the draft, draft chart accounts for the LAFCO financial system.
Thank you, Chair. So the draft chart of accounts, that has been prepared by our bookkeeper, Alyssa Schiffman, and reviewed by the staff. The structure follows standard government accounting practices that have been tailored to reflect LAFCO's specific function and independent objectives. Some changes to that, the chart of accounts is, you know, we still have salaries, benefits, and administrative operations, but they're presented in greater detail, specifically with salaries and benefits. And this is to ensure more precise tracking for payroll, retirement, and health-related costs as these functions transition from the county to LAFCO's independent providers. And there is a new section, or subsection, for education accounts, and that's for Commissioner Stipens, meeting expenses, and training, or travel reimbursements. And for services and supplies, those accounts have been grouped together more logically, and we have professional services consultants under those operating expenses. And it results in a slightly different order compared to what we have now under the county's format. And our fund balance and reserves are still tracked and for long-term fiscal stability. So the chart of accounts hopefully provides a clearer tracking for all those costs as LAFCO transitions from the county and from the auditor controllers to our independent bookkeeper and payroll provider. So the ask today from the commission is just to receive that new chart of accounts and direct staff to work with the Policy and Budget Committee, just, just to finalize those for implementation by next year, January first.
Any comments, questions? No question. Any public comment?
Yeah.
Move approval?
Seeing.
Second.
So I do have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion or public comment? Hearing none?
We have a. Quick, quick comment. I think the, it, it all makes sense. And I, I think Ralph, you, those others have suggested that there needed to be a little bit more detail around some of the employee expenses, but otherwise it all makes sense. I just wanted to get that in the record. Because everybody's looked at this and it makes sense.
Thank you. So this, a roll call vote, please.
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Furia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Marchand?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley?
Aye.
Commissioner Splendorio?
Aye.
Commissioner Hu?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Okay, the next item is going to be matters initiated by members of the commission. Anybody have anything? Bob?
It's not so much matters initiated, it's just a quick update. I don't know if you guys remember that the LARPD in East Bay Park District was in here? And, you know, the observation was made that this really is a contract dispute. So they have now, the lawsuits have been filed, they've got to change your venue, and it's going to the San Francisco County Courts to, that's the next step.
Thank you for the update. That's good to know.
So actually, I, I learned something yesterday about Mike Preston, who was the general manager of Fairview Fire. Mike passed away in January twenty twenty-five. Mike was really helpful to the commission in our favorite, our favorite special district, Fairview Fire. And he was apparently, well, he had cancer, but he lasted like three months. He worked almost to the last day. So anyway, yeah, sad, sad to hear that he's gone. They are going to be having, I guess, looking for a new general manager. And I guess that they have an open house, if anybody's interested, at the Fairview Fire station? And it's in October, I think, isn't it?
Yes, I believe so. And I just want to add, Mike was a pleasure to work with. I would come to the fire station a lot just to review their transparency checklist that was given by the CSDA, which now we'll probably be a member of. But I am saddened by the news as well, and, you know, I wish I learned that sooner. So just want to give my condolences.
Okay, let's move on to the executive officers' report.
Thank you, Chair. So just minor little updates on that report. There is a white paper titled Best Practices and Resources for Drinking Water Service Reviews, and it just highlights different strategies that LAFCOs can use to strengthen MSRs for drinking water, public water. So it emphasizes the importance of conducting countywide municipal service reviews, what, which is, this commission is good at, to capture the full picture of service delivery and identify certain gaps and evaluate opportunities for collaboration or consolidation. And then in addition to outlining these best practices, they do include private and wholesale water providers that maybe that should be something under LAFCO's purview, even if we don't directly have authority or to implement anything, just to list them and include them in our MSRs, and then engaging with the State Water Board's Division of Drinking Water and proactively sharing findings with local agencies, as well as using valuable data resources to support robust analysis. And in that report, they list off different organizations where we could use that data in the future. And then another just update is from the Alameda County Board of Supervisors on March eleventh. They just did a, a technical budget adjustment, and now LAFCO were officially transferred from the CAO's office, our positions, and to the CDA's office. And just to provide that update, just to let the commission know that went through.
Thank you, Rachel. Informational items?
Nothing new to note. You know, pretty much our proposals are, you know, under review right now. We might have a proposal in terms of the Aurora Lago project annexation into the city of Pleasanton. That might come up at our next meeting in November. And then we do just have the CalAFCO annual conference scheduled from October twenty-second to the twenty-fourth in San Diego.
Wait, wait, I'm crestfallen. You have, you just mentioned CalAFCO, but you didn't mention that maybe one of us is speaking at it.
Excuse me. Could, could, I'm, I'm not aware, Commissioner Splendorio, are you speaking?
Apparently, they're not doing a very good job of promoting it. I will.
It's enlightening us.
No, I, I'm, I'm on the panel for the opening general session on Wednesday afternoon. I, I think it's, ask old people what they wish they knew when they started, and ask young people what they think they should know going forward. I think it's something like that, but that.
I'm sure your, your face will be front and center on the agenda and brochure come close to the, to the date, don't you worry. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I'd like to actually adjourn the meeting today in honor of Mike Preston. He was a great guy, so thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.